Slow, see what hurts what doesn't.
It is 7 o'clock.
Yeah, right?
Okay.
May we start?
Stretching before you get out of bed. I know the feeling.
All right, good evening. It is 7 o'clock. I'm going to call the Zoning Board of Appeals meeting to order. Can we start with a roll call?
Alberto Paratori.
Aziz Asen.
Norma Drummond.
Rocco Limetone.
Art Mahoney.
Thank you. Can I ask everyone to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, our next two meetings are going to be Tuesday, October 28th and Tuesday, November 25th. We have one set of minutes to appeal. As usual, Julie did a great job. There wasn't a s- I couldn't find a single thing in there to correct. So is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good, thank you. So for those of you who have never been here before, the way our meeting operates, the first thing on our agenda is a decision and that's something of an application that this board has already reviewed. So we're just gonna, we will just issue a decision. Then we have public hearings. Those again are applications we've reviewed, but we've sent letters out and wanted to hear if there, if any of the neighbors had any concerns about those applications. And then lastly, we have two reviews that are on for discussion, which are really the first time this board is seeing those applications. So it's our opportunity to first ask you what it is that you're looking for because, you know, we recognize that everybody who's here is looking for something that is not allowed by code. So it's, you know, the decision of this board whether the, we make a convincing argument for us that we should consider it. So let's start with item number one, Appeal 4146, Mama Mia Pizzeria, Joe Cordozo, 899 to 901 Route 376, Wapenters Falls, requesting a 210 square foot size variance for a proposed 24 foot by 40 foot or 960 square foot detached garage pursuant to Section 194-107 and the Schedule of Bulk Regulations. So we have a decision on this one?
Now, we had, in the last meeting, we had asked the Planning Board to take the lead. So...
The Planning Board has done their review. The Planning Board had held a public hearing, which we agreed to allow them to do because we agreed to let them be lead agency. So they have complete, completed their work on this. So it's now, it's missing one piece and that's from us.
Okay, so it's our piece only. Okay, so this is a decision that is from Appeal number 4146. Applicant is Mama Mia Pizzeria requesting a 210 square foot size variance from the requirements of Section 194-107 of the Town Code for a proposed 24 feet by 40 feet, 960 square foot detached garage. Resolution offered by zoning board member Aziz Asen, whereas applicant owns Mama Mia Pizzeria and also lives in the house located on the property. And whereas applicant has applied to the Planning Board to install a detached garage for the, for the storage of residential vehicles and other residential items. And whereas there's vegetation surrounding the location of the proposed detached garage, so it will be screened well from the neighbors and the public. And whereas this is an unlisted action under SECRA and the Zoning Board of Appeal has consented to allow the Planning Board to serve as a lead agency. And whereas the Planning Board can guaranteed amended site plan, site plan approval and conducted a public hearing at its September 18th, 2025 meeting. And whereas the ZBA waived its public hearing since the Planning Board conducted a public hearing. And whereas the Zoning Board of Appeals finds that the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood as the garage will be used for residential purposes and is already surrounded by commercial users. The desired result could be achieved by other means, but the requested variance is not large. The variance is not substantial. The variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental condition. Now therefore be, therefore be it resolved that the Zoning Board of Appeals hereby approves the request of Mama Mia Pizzeria and Joe Cordozo as applicant for a 210 square foot size variance from the requirements of Section 194-107 of the Town Code for a proposed 24 feet by 40 feet, 960 square foot detached garage. Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the Chair or other duly authorized member of the Zoning Board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the Town Clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner.
Is there a second?
Second.
Votes as follows: Aziz.
Aye.
Rocco.
Aye.
Alberto.
Aye.
Art.
Aye.
And myself, aye. Your motion carries. You are all set.
Thank you.
All right, have a good evening. All right, item number two is, we are now starting the public hearings. So item number two is Appeal 4144, David Chokey, 17 Gertsway, Hopewell Junction, requesting a 13 foot sideline variance for a proposed two-story attached garage addition that will be 25 by 27 feet or 675 square feet with a main floor, enclosed breezeway, eight foot by 18 feet or 144 square feet and an unfinished second floor, 21 feet by 27 feet or 567 square feet, total size of 1,386 square feet pursuant to the Schedule of Bulk Regulations. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good evening.
Good evening. Michael Berta, Architect for the applicant. Have you tonight?
Good, so we had an opportunity to review this last month. Essentially what you explained to us is that the applicant has, their existing house has a three-bay garage, but they're looking to close off two of those to create a mudroom and some additional family space on the first floor.
Correct.
And in, and said with a, through a breezeway, through a connection with a breezeway, they would, are going to create this addition, first floor, so they would have the garage space that they need for their bicycles and trailer, tractor and everything else.
It's working, you name it.
And a second floor that we have been told is going to be unfinished, but is labeled in the plans as a, as recreation space or recreation room.
Future, I mean, down the road they may finish it. If they do, they'll, they'll obviously have to apply for a separate building permit on it.
Okay.
Right now, the plans are for, to, for it to just be there.
Okay. The addition's going to match the existing finish of the house.
Correct.
The, the previous or the existing garages really face your na- the neighbor.
Correct, they need to, they face the street.
And so, this, yeah, the way you've told, described it to us last month was that this addition is now going to face the, the street. So it's actually going to create less disturbance for the neighbor, even though it's going to be a little bit closer.
Correct.
So, and there is additional, there is vegetation there, but the applicant has said that he would put in some additional...
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna add in a couple spruces, a couple arbovites, just to kind of soften it up a little bit and create a little bit of a screen.
Good. Any comments or questions from board members?
I do not.
I'm good.
I'm good.
Good. So is there anyone here who wishes to speak for or against the request from David Chokey, 17 Gertsway, Hopewell Junction, requesting a 13 foot sideline variance for a proposed two-story attached garage addition, 25 feet by 27 feet with a main floor, enclosed breezeway, an eight foot by 18 feet or 144 square foot and an unfinished second floor that's, will be 21 by 27 square feet for a total size of 1,386 square feet. Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
On favor? Aye. Aye. Get your voices, Aziz, go on.
Appeal number 4144, applicant David Chokey, requesting a 13 foot sideline variance from the requirements of the Schedule of Bulk Regulations for a proposed two-story attached garage addition, 25 by 27 feet, 675 square feet with a main floor, enclosed breezeway, eight by 18 feet, 144 square feet and an unfinished second floor, 21 by 27 feet, 567 square feet, total size 1,386 square feet. Location is Gertsway, Hopewell Junction, zoning R1. Read by Alberto Paratori. Whereas the applicant currently has a three-bay garage and whereas the proposal includes using two of the existing bays and converting them into a mudroom and a laundry room and using a breezeway to connect a new garage, and whereas the current garage faces the neighbor's property and not the road, so the proposed garage should increase...
Should decrease.
Decrease any noise that the neighbor facing the existing garage would experience. And whereas there is a vegetation surrounding, there is vegetation surrounding the location of the proposed addition, but the applicant has agreed to install additional spruces and pines to increase screening. And whereas this is a type-two action under SECRA, and whereas the legal notice was published in the Poughkeepsie Journal on September 21st, and whereas the Zoning Board of Appeals held a public hearing on September 23rd, 2025, and whereas the Zoning Board of Appeals finds that the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood as the new garage will face the road instead of the neighbor's property. The desired result cannot be achieved by other means due to the layout of the property and orientation of the house. The variance could be deemed to substantial, but the impacts would be mitigated by the installation of spruce and pine trees. The variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions. Now therefore be it resolved that the Zoning Board of Appeals hereby approves the request of David...
Chokey.
Chokey, excuse me, I'm choking here. Chokey for a, for a 13 foot sideline variance from the requirements of the Schedule of Bulk Regulations for a proposed two-story attached garage addition, 25 by 27 feet, 675 square feet with the main floor, enclosed breezeway, eight by 18 feet, 144 square feet and unfinished second floor, 21 by 27 feet, 567 square feet, total size 1,386 square feet, on the condition that the applicant installs additional plantings subject to the approval of the town planner. Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the Chair or other duly authorized member of the Zoning Board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the Town Clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner.
Is there a second?
Second.
Votes as follows: Aziz.
Aye.
Rocco.
Aye.
Alberto.
Aye.
Art.
Aye.
And myself, aye. So you, the motion carries, you are all set. Now you just deal with the Building Department.
Thank you so much. Appreciate your efforts on this.
Yep, have a good evening.
You as well.
All right, item number three, Appeal 4145, Elizabeth Roberts, 19 Patty Place, Hopewell Junction, requesting a four-foot side yard variance for an existing 12 foot by 12 foot deck, a nine-foot sideline variance for an existing above-ground pool and a 10-foot sideline variance for an, for existing pool equipment pursuant to Section 194-95 and the Schedule of Bulk Regulations. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Julie, you can pick. On favor?
Aye.
Aye. And, all right, good evening. So last month, we had the opportunity to meet with you and kind of review. The takeaway was, if I'm remembering correctly, you bought your house in around 2000. Right. The deck was already there.
Right.
You had a contractor come in and put a pool in. He took out a permit. Somehow the pool didn't end up in the right place. It ended up more to the side. And the pool permit was never closed out, much to your, or totally unaware to you. Right, because you, again, you had an outside contractor that came into this. The other issue is that you do have state wetlands on your property, so it really does limit where this pool could have gone on your property anyway. So, anything else you want to add? All right, so this, this person tried doing everything the right way, although she bought the house with the deck as it was, so. So do I, any questions, comments or questions from board members? Again, we saw this last month, so.
Yeah.
All right, so is there anyone who wish, here who wishes to speak for or against the request from Elizabeth Roberts, 19 Patty Place, Hopewell Junction, requesting a four-foot side yard variance for an existing 12 foot by 12 foot deck, a nine-foot sideline variance for an existing above-ground pool and a 10-foot sideline variance for existing pool equipment? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
With Appeal number 4145, the applicant is Elizabeth Roberts. This is for a four-foot sideline variance from the requirements of Section 194-94 of the Town Code and the Schedule of Bulk Regulations for an existing 12 feet by 12 feet deck. Number two, a nine-foot sideline variance from the requirements of Section 194-95 of the Town Code and the Schedule of Bulk Regulations for an existing above-ground pool. And number three, a 10-foot sideline variance from the requirements of 194-95 of the Town Code and the Schedule of Bulk Regulations for existing pool equipment. Collectively, we call these the variances. Location is 19 Patty Place, zoning district R1. Resolution offered by zoning board member Rocco Limetone. Whereas the applicant purchased the house in 2000, and whereas the deck was pre-existing when the applicant purchased the property, but it did not have the proper permits. And whereas the pool was installed in 2004 and was not placed where it was supposed to be. And whereas there are state wetlands on the property and the property is long and narrow, so the applicant is limited in where she can locate structures on the property. And whereas this is a type-two action under SECRA, and whereas the legal notice was published in the Poughkeepsie Journal on September 21st of 2025. And whereas the Zoning Board of Appeals held a public hearing on September 23rd, 2025. And whereas the Zoning Board of Appeals finds that the granting of the variances will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood as the pool deck and pool equipment are all existing. The desired result cannot be achieved by other means due to the narrow shape of the property. The variances are not substantial. The variances will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions. Now therefore be it resolved that the Zoning Board of Appeals hereby approves the request of Elizabeth Roberts. For one, a four-foot sideline variance from the requirements of Section 194-94 of the Town Code and the Schedule of Bulk Regulations for an existing 12 foot by 12 foot deck. Two, a nine-foot sideline variance from the requirements of Section 194-95 of the Town Code and the Schedule of Bulk Regulations for an existing above-ground pool. And three, a 10-foot sideline variance from the requirements of Section 194-95 of the Town Code and the Schedule of Bulk Regulations for existing pool equipment. Be it further resolved that within five days of the adoption of this resolution, the Chair or other duly authorized member of the Zoning Board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the Town Clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner.
Is there a second?
Second.
Votes as follows: Aziz.
Aye.
Rocco.
Aye.
Alberto.
Aye.
Art.
Aye.
And myself, aye. Your motion carries, you are all set. All right, have a good evening. All right, item number four, and this is our last public hearing this evening. Richard Conrad, 36 Timothy Lane, Hopewell Junction, requesting a 22-foot rear line, nine-foot side yard variance for an existing 10 foot by 24 or 240 square foot shed with a garage door, a 20-foot rear line variance for an existing detached garage, a 147 front yard variance for an existing six-foot fence in the front yard and a front yard variance for an existing pool and fence pursuant to Section 194-98, 194-107 and 194-17 and the Schedule of Bulk Regulations. Good evening.
Good evening.
Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. So last month, we had the opportunity to review your application with you. To be honest, most of this work was done with permits and is, was closed out, but just the appropriate variances, which is not given, exactly. So, so the garage itself, you actually thought you were, originally, I guess your intention was to build a shed, but because you put a garage door on it instead of typical shed doors, it became a, it became a garage. And a shed has a different variance, you know, the area variance or side yard setback requirement. And because it became a garage, you had to meet the full requirement and not the shed. So you met the 15 foot if it had been a shed, but because of the garage door, it changed. So that's the first, this, the pool, the, and that, that all had its appropriate, the town closed it out. It had a permits, it had inspections, everything. It's, so we're just cleaning that one up. The fence, the 10, the, the, the six-foot fence extends beyond the 10 foot that you're allowed in front of the front yard, an additional 147 square, linear feet. But you are 10 feet off the property line, well beyond the two foot that's required. There is nobody past you, you're at the end of a cul-de-sac.
Yep.
So it's actually more beneficial to your neighbor. You're actually giving him more use, more property to, whatever, to, and buffering that property by, by putting that fence there. So, any comments or questions from board members?
No, I mean, I think the updated maps show everything what the applicant has, is requesting and what the current situation is, so I'm good.
No, from everything I looked at, I'm, I'm fine. I don't have anything. No question.
Okay. So is there anyone here who wishes to speak for or against the request from Richard Conrad, 36 Timothy Lane, Hopewell Junction, requesting a 22-foot rear line, nine-foot side yard variance for an existing 10 foot by 24 or 240 square foot shed with a garage door, a 24-foot rear line variance for an existing detached garage, a 147-foot front line variance for an existing six-foot fence in the front yard and a front yard variance for an existing pool and pool fence? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And?
Appeal number 4147, applicant Richard Conrad, for a 22-foot rear line variance and a nine-foot sideline variance from the requirements of Section 194-107 of the Town Code and the Schedule of Bulk Regulations for an existing 10 by 24 to 240 square foot shed with a garage door. And two, a 24-foot rear line variance from the requirements of Section 194-107 of the Town Code and the Schedule of Bulk Regulations for an existing detached garage. And three, a 147-foot front yard variance from the requirements of Section 194-98 of the Town Code for an existing six-foot fence in the front yard. And four, a front yard variance from the requirements of Section 194-95 of the Town Code, Section 194-98 of the Town Code and the Schedule of Bulk Regulations for an existing pool and pool fence, collectively the variances. Located at 36 Timothy Lane, Hopewell, resolution offered by zoning board member Art Mahoney. Whereas the applicant has an existing fence located in the front yard, which is beneficial to both the town and the applicant, since the property is located near Red Wing Park and Wardle Kill Rod and Gun Club. And whereas the applicant's property includes what the applicant thought was a shed, but is actually classified as a garage since it has a garage door. And whereas there is another detached garage requiring a variance, but it has been there since 2000 and received a certificate of completion and all necessary permits. And whereas the existing pool also received all necessary permits and a certificate of completion, but since the applicant is before the ZBA for other matters, it has requested a variance. Whereas this is a type-two action under SECRA and whereas the legal notice was published in the Poughkeepsie Journal on September 21st, 2025. And whereas the Zoning Board of Appeals held a public hearing on September 23rd, 2025. And whereas the Zoning Board of Appeals finds that the granting of the variances will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood, since these structures are existing, the desired result cannot be achieved by other means due to the existing layout of the property. The variances are substantial, but are mitigated by its location near Red Wing Park and the Rod and Gun Club. The variances will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions. Now therefore be it resolved that the Zoning Board of Appeals hereby approves the request of Richard Conrad for one, a 22-foot rear line variance and a nine-foot sideline variance from the requirements of Section 194-107 of the Town Code and the Schedule of Bulk Regulations for an existing 10 by 24 foot, 240 square foot shed with a garage door. And two, a 24-foot rear line variance from the requirements of Section 194-107 of the Town Code and the Schedule of Bulk Regulations for an existing detached garage. And three, a 147-foot front yard variance from the requirements of Section 194-98 of the Town Code for an existing six-foot fence in the front yard. And four, a front yard variance from the requirements of Section 194-95 of the Town Code, Section 194-98 of the Town Code and Schedule of Bulk Regulations for an existing pool and pool fence. Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the Chair or other duly authorized member of the Zoning Board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the Town Clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner.
Is there a second?
Second.
Votes as follows: Aziz.
Aye.
Rocco.
Aye.
Alberto.
Aye.
Art.
Aye.
And myself, aye. So your motion carries and you're all set, okay? Have a good evening. All right, no more public hearings. The, the last two applications on our agenda tonight are discussions. We are going to spend more time on these because, as you can tell, we ask all of our questions tonight so that the public hearings run smoothly. So first up, item number five, Appeal 4148, Jesse Alba, 91 Saddle Ridge Drive, Hopewell Junction, requesting a 24-foot side yard variance for a proposed one-story detached garage that would be 30 foot by 30 feet or 900 square feet pursuant to Section 194-17 and the Schedule of Bulk Regulations. The footprint of the existing house is 1,716 square feet. So, good evening. So again, first time we're seeing your application. If you could take us through what you're proposing to do and why?
Well, I would like to build a 30 by 30 garage to house some of the classic cars that I have and my lawnmower and old mower, all that type of stuff.
Do you have an existing garage on your house?
I do. I have a two-car attached garage.
Okay.
On the house now. But I have four classic cars, so I need some more space.
Okay.
So the, the 24-foot variance really, I didn't know what to put. I'm not going to actually have it built if I get approved, one foot off of the property line. It's going to be at the very least five to six feet and I'm going to try and, and go as far away as I can.
It's going to be our first request.
Yeah.
Why does it need to be right, literally right on the property line?
Right. Now, that property line, I had a survey company come out and they looked for, I guess, the, the pylons that show where the property, they said they couldn't find any. They went six or seven houses down and measured off and measured off and measured off.
Right. Discovered that you're encroaching on your neighbor's property.
Right, which of course I didn't know. And when I bought the house only two years ago, my neighbor Frankie, we all discussed it. We all thought it was the tree line. And then the water covert, that was the property line. But by the survey, it's showing it that it's a little more towards my way.
Yeah. Jackie, do you have the pictures from Matt's report? Just so the board members can see the...
There is a little discrepancies, discrepancy between his survey.
Okay.
If you go on, on like the Duchess Parcel.
Yeah, you can't go by parcel access as, as...
When I looked at both of them, I was like, all right.
They're, they're a little off, you know?
Okay.
It's not horribly off, but it's, they can be a little off, so.
Sure.
I just want the board members to just see what we're talking about here.
You could just screw it up.
Okay, so you're, what you're, you're asking for the 24 feet, but really you're telling us you don't need the 24 feet.
And I'm going to go as far as I can, as far as I can to the right, but my septic fields are over there.
Got it, okay. That was good. The first thing we were asked, what's prohibiting you from moving it more behind your house?
I think I'm able to go maybe another five, maybe even 10 feet, but, you know, when I get the contractor to come over and see how much...
Okay, so it is considerably past your, the end of your existing driveway.
Oh, yeah.
You're proposing to add on or extend your driveway or...
I would rather, I, I really don't want to pave it.
Oh, we're, we're not saying you have to.
Yeah, no, I just want the gravel down to it. Because again, it's going to be more for storage, like it's, it's not going to be a workshop where I'm working on the cars. I work on the car in my garage that's attached to the house. I just need a, a place where I can store them.
Okay.
Where they're out of the elements.
And just so we're all clear, this is all your private use? There's no, there's no commercial, there's no business use of this?
No.
Okay. What is the proposed finish of the garage?
So I, I got, I'm looking at two different things and I guess cost is what's going to drive me. It's either going to be the prefab metal building. I'd rather do, you know, like a regular wood and, you know, whatever, but it depends on, on price.
Stick, yeah, stick builds.
Exactly.
Okay, yeah, you know, metal buildings. Your neighbor may have more to say. What's between your, your property or where you're proposing this garage to be and your What's between your property or where you're proposing this garage to be and your neighbor's property?
So first, there's like a tree line or a bush line, then there's the covert, then his usable property starts. So his usable property and where the property line is, is probably 15 feet, and then from there, I'm going to try and go as...
Okay. But you said some bushes. Are they tall?
Yeah.
How... What I'm trying to get at is, is there any vegetative screening there that would block the garage? We talked... How tall our garage are we talking?
Yeah, they're not... They're not tall enough to block the garage, but that is in...
It would buffer it still.
Yeah.
It would distract you. They're not seeing the full wall of a garage.
Right. Exactly. I mean, we just... Last year, we put in a row of abreviating between the two houses.
Okay. Good.
And then I want to go down all the way from where they end now, all the way down to the end of the property, which when they grow, would then... Excuse me. Would then shield the garage a little better.
Okay. So if we don't have to approve 24 feet, that would be our desired... What's the real number you think we should consider?
I really think... I really think 10 feet off of that would be very, very...
So reducing the 24 feet down to 14 feet?
Right.
Okay. That's much more reasonable.
Yeah. The one foot, I didn't know what to put, so I just said anything.
Yeah, that was one of my concerns also, because if we do give you a 24-foot variance, that means somebody down the road can build the... Rebuild the garage.
Right there.
Yeah, right there. So what I would like to see is if you can get us a new proposed map showing what you plan to do, especially for the public hearing, because you have it a month, and you can just measure it, and that will make it easier.
Your surveyor should be able to locate your septic on here.
Yo... Okay. Yeah, I didn't... I guess I maybe I didn't ask him to do that?
Yeah, he should be able to locate that. There are public records of where it is, so...
But I'll have him put that on the next...
Because that, again, helps us see that you really have no other choice. You can't put it in the back of your home so that it needs zero setback, because you wouldn't be here if you could get away without needing a setback.
Right.
Although we're such a pleasant lot, we know.
You definitely are.
But anyway, if you... There really is something that is limiting your ability to move it away from the property line. It's especially something like a septic, they should be able to show that on here.
Sure.
So my... Again, my suggestion would be to make a note to have a new updated map showing where your proposed garage is going to be and how far from the... Your new property line.
Sounds good.
So, but in the meantime, I think we can still schedule the public hearing, working with the 14-foot, right?
Oh, yeah, that's fine. Yeah, we can go.
So Jackie, you're going to make that correction?
Yeah.
Good. Okay.
I mean, if we have to make adjustments, we're going to go...
I can. We can all handle it. This shouldn't take any...
No, I'm going to make a phone call tomorrow, and it'll be fine.
Yeah.
Yeah. So then we can make an adjustment, but then...
So is your neighbor aware of this?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, he is.
Okay.
That would be the neighbor...
Frank...
Jack Ariello?
Yeah, he owns Hopewell Pizzeria right on 376.
Okay. Yeah, if you can get it right on the property line where you propose it, it's...
One foot off.
One foot, yeah, one foot.
All right. So if you can get a letter from the neighbor or the neighbor comes and supports your proposal, that'll also help.
Okay.
But again, an updated survey would be great.
Sounds good.
So I make a motion to advertise.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. We'll see you next month. Jackie will give you information about your sign.
Thank you so much.
Okay? We'll see you next month. And last, but not least, item number six, appeal 4149, Michael...
Go ahead. Ran Alone.
Thank you. Ran Alone.
Let her try. It's like you run by yourself.
Ran Alone.
I like that. That's a really good way to tell people. Okay.
Well, Ran Alone.
Michael Ran Alone, 8 Sunshine Lane, Hopewell Junction, requesting a 24-foot size variance for a proposed one-story detached garage, 27 by 32 feet or 864 square feet pursuant to Section 194-107 and the Schedule of Bulk Regulations. The footprint of your existing house is 1,400 square feet. So you are literally here because you need a 24-foot size variance. Okay. Take us through this. What do you... Why do you need this extra 24 feet?
Well, two reasons. One is cost, and the other is, you know, it's 27 by 32. It's just for storage for a classic car.
Do you have existing garages on your house?
Under the house now, yes.
You do? Okay. So again...
I got two in there, and so I made a deal with my wife. If you let me build a garage, I'll give you a spot.
Wait, does your wife have a spot?
Not now. She got kicked out.